The School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board, please. At this time, I would ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with our awards and recognitions. Mrs. Felton.
Good evening. Outstanding Educator Award. The School Board is pleased to recognize Ocean Lake's high school teacher Kathy Turner, who was named one of the University of Chicago's 2017 Outstanding Educators. The purpose of the award is to recognize select high school teachers for making a difference in the lives of students enrolled in the university. Ms. Turner, who is the School Science Department Chair and is also a National Board Certified Teacher, was nominated by a former student in her AP Chemistry classes, who is now attending the University of Chicago. Here is a portion of what the student wrote. You taught me to always have a good work ethic when approaching problems, even if I didn't think I could complete them. You helped me to discover times management skills that I have used in all other subjects and plan to use for the rest of my life. Thank you for everything you have taught me, both in chemistry and in how to approach other problems that I will encounter in life. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Turner on this outstanding honor.
Our next recognition is for Plaza Middle School, 8th grade teacher Anthony Nobles, who earned first place in the 2017 Economic Educator Awards Program sponsored by the Virginia Council on Economic Education. Mr. Nobles won first place in the K through 12 lesson or unit category for his entry, Island Economic Simulation. His creative two-part lesson has students showcase their knowledge about the principles of economics by pretending to build an economy from the ground up for a group of people stranded on an island. As part of the lesson, students demonstrated the mastery of economics vocabulary by writing stories about the people on the island. In part two of the lesson, the students proposed which of the world's four major economic systems would work best for their island. Students also had to justify their choice and the impacts that the system would have on their characters, particularly when facing issues of scarcity. Congratulations on this well-derves award. Mrs. Chairwoman, this concludes our recognitions for the evening. Dr. Spence, we look forward to hearing the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Board. I am once again excited to share with you the five things that you need to know about Virginia Beach schools this month. At number one, I'm proud to announce that Virginia Beach City Public Schools has been named a 2017 Learning Council Digital Curriculum Strategy Award winner. This award recognizes school divisions for their work to not only transform the way they teach, but also for their management level restructuring for digital learning. VBCPS was honored for our work, under compass to 2020, in developing multiple pathways for students, specifically in using digital resources and tools to help personalize learning for children. And the good news does not end there. At number two, I want to share that we were one of 30 school divisions in Virginia to be named a 2017 Certified Green School Division by the VSB. This is the seventh consecutive year we've received the honor for our work in environmental and sustainable practices, including implementing energy efficiency measures, construction of green buildings, and the installation of environmental programs in our schools. And the work is paying off, according to staff in school division services. Since September 2008, our efforts have saved the equivalent of 173,000 trees, 30,520 cubic yards of landfill space, and enough energy to power almost 4,500 homes for a year, along with the saving of 3.9 million gallons of oil and 71 million gallons of water. Number three this week, it's been an exciting week for teachers across the division because tomorrow night, we will gather at the Sandler Center for the Arts for the Teacher Grants and improved futures, or TGIF, celebration. And there will be a lot to celebrate, as the Virginia Beach Education Foundation is going to be awarding a record $150,000 in grants this year. These grants are going to go to 71 recipients from 38 different schools. And as you know, through its Adopt A Plus Grants program, our foundation awards both innovative learning grants and school-wide grants that support classroom instruction and improve student learning and achievement. All of these grants are funded through corporate underwriters and personal donations made directly to the foundation or through the United Way contributions, which are designated to the VBF. And for more information on how you can help support the VBEF, please visit vbschools.com. At number four, each school's campus compass for 2017-18 is available now online. These are annual school report cards that provide a snapshot of each school's demographics and share the progress students are making towards achieving various local and state accountability measures. Parents can access their campus compass and find out measures, including the percentage of students at school reading on grade level, students enrolled in rigorous coursework, and results from the school climate survey. To access those, again, visit vbschools.com. And finally, at number five, so here we are at the start of the holiday season. Hopefully, you saw our foyer decorated as you came into the building. The tree out there is adorned with student artwork, and you may have noticed that we've left some space underneath the tree. We are hoping that our community will help fill that space with food donations. Throughout the month of December, we will once again be accepting contributions for our beach bags program, and your donations will go to help support that program, which provides shelf-stable meals for students in need over the weekend and over holiday breaks. As a reminder, the SAB, our school administration building, is open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Next is the public hearing on the operating budget for fiscal year 2018-19 and the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Capital Improvement Program, known as CIP. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am, we have four. We'll start with Melissa Smassel. I hope I said that right. Apologize if I did. And then we have Sarah Perez Sanders, Kelly Walker, and then Gary McCollum.
Good evening. Three weeks ago, I created a petition which now has over 800 signatures. In the petition, we requested the following: that the Virginia Beach Public Schools lock all exterior doors during the school day, and that the security desk attendant is utilized to buzz visitors in after visually inspecting them via camera feed. I'm here to ask you to make this a citywide policy. A locked door is a basic level of security that is currently neglected in many of our city schools. Unlocked doors needlessly put students, teachers, and staff at risk. Only three weeks ago, locked doors saved children's lives in California. On November 15th, a gunman tried to gain access to a school. He spent six minutes checking doors, all of which were locked. The locked doors saved lives. The locked doors gave law enforcement precious extra time to apprehend the shooter. Right now, in our Virginia Beach schools, the doors are unlocked. Anyone can walk right in. As a local business owner, I've regularly visited six or so elementary schools as a partner in education and always been shocked that I can walk right in. All of the private schools that I deal with, preschools, Norfolk Public Schools, all have locked doors and buzzer systems, but here at the beach, we do not. Let me give you a few examples at my daughter's school. Since September began, I've visited my daughter approximately 10 times during the school year or during the school day. On at least five of these visits, the security desk attendant has not even looked up at me until I've arrived at her desk. No eye contact, no visual inspection. On two occasions, the security desk was empty. I could have walked anywhere in the school that day. And the worst part, on one of those days, when I walked in, my daughter was walking down the hallway with just another student, and there are no adults in sight. Stop and think about this for a moment. Do you find this in any way acceptable? Now, think of how easily, in any of these situations, a violent person intent on doing harm could get into the school, take down a security attendant, before she could even sound an alarm. A locked door is necessary. It is naive to leave these doors unlocked, and it's negligent. I've taken time to discuss my concerns with the school's principal and the Safe Schools' representatives. They have been a bit reluctant to make the change. They pointed out that various ways that a lock and buzzer cannot provide 100% safety, but I'm not looking for a guarantee. I'm looking for a very basic level of security, a locked door. The Safe School representatives touted the security desk attendant position as a position that most districts don't have. It's a great layer of security, but the attendant can do very little once a dangerous person is already inside a school. Ultimately, the security desk is not enough. The unlocked doors and unfettered entry into many of our elementary schools is a serious problem, allowing a dangerous person to already be in a school before anything's done. Over 800 of us are requesting that you make locking all front doors a high-priority action item and budget for it, also to have the security attendant visually inspect people before buzzing them in. So many families were baffled that our doors were not already locked. On the petition, people have been coming up to me, but they're paying attention now, and we want action from the school board. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Perez Sanders, then Kelly Walker, then Gary McCollum.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Perez Sanders. I'm a parent of four current Virginia Beach Public City Schools students, and I'm here to speak in reference to buses that do not have stop-arm cameras. Since the end of September, I have tried to reach out to transportation and find out what were the protocols as to why our schools do not have the current cameras. Since then, we reached out to our school board panel, and only Carolyn Weems has lent an ear to come to our Civic League meeting, at which time, we presented her with five current videos at the time. And since then, in the last four weeks, we've had 20 physical violations throughout Virginia Beach where vehicles are not stopping for our cameras. In one of them, there is witness to a vehicle rear-ending a bus. And to others, there are students who are almost nearly missed as they were trying to cross the street. Our current police department is limited on resources as to be able to patrol when buses are loading and unloading. I have reached out to various companies and actually found the company that Newport News used for their pilot program for 90 days, where they actually had 709 violations recorded in a 90-day period. 19 of those violations were in one single bus stop. The stop-arm cameras can be a valuable resource for our schools. It would not cost Virginia Beach Public Schools one cent. The school program that I'm referring to is called Bus Patrol. They install, maintain, and record all video footage when the cameras start recording, 30 seconds prior to stop. They actually begin to record right before the stop-arm comes out. They, the company, reviews all footage that is uploaded throughout the day. At no point does Virginia Beach City Public Schools have to provide any maintenance crew or maintain these cameras. For the duration of the contract, the school bus program actually installs them and maintains them and uploads them, and they issue the summons via our county courthouse.
Kelly Walker, then Gary McCollum.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Edwards, members of the School Board, and Superintendent Spence. My name is Kelly Walker, and I'm the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. The VBA is proud of its member contribution achieving full accreditation status of all Virginia Beach City Public Schools. We applaud the efforts of the School Board and the administration in our achievements. However, we must recognize the sacrifices and contributions made by the teachers, teacher assistants, bus drivers, custodians, and all of the VBA members who made this happen. Again, since the Great Recession, salaries have been stagnant, and in fact, there were three consecutive years from 2009 to 2012 with no significant increases in pay, and at the same time, class sizes increased and workloads multiplied. High school teachers have been asked to teach an additional class, which equates to a 20% increase in workload. Throughout the division, the student-to-teacher ratio has also risen by roughly 5%. Teacher workload has increased significantly due to data collection and reporting requirements. Additionally, each employee has lost 5% of their take-home pay due to the changes in the VRS laws. The dilution of the step increases on the instructional scale does not reward experience. To illustrate this point, the average teacher's salary in 2008 was $52,377. The average teacher's salary as of June 12, 2017, is $53,930. This is only a 3% increase in pay during a 10-year period. The official Consumer Price Index again has increased from 12% since 2008. Rising health care deductibles deter employees from seeking needed medical care. So what does all of this mean? Teachers have lost a total of 15% in purchasing power, while workloads have increased by at least 20% to 25%. This is what sacrifice looks like. Now, there is an opportunity to reward those who have sacrificed so much and make things right. Therefore, we suggest the following when addressing the 2018-2019 budget. One, a minimum of 5% increase in pay for all employees, and again, try to adjust the 38-year step increase scale. An independent comprehensive compensation study to be conducted to address this. A review of alternative innovative health care systems, such as the one offered in other school divisions, and a further strategic reduction in class sizes. And then finally, eliminate the 22 mandated professional development work requirements for the instructional staff. To this end, the VBA would fully support efforts by the School Board and administration to reward those who have worked so hard and sacrificed so much. Thank you.
Gary McCollum.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Spence, Board members, I stand before you, and I'll be very brief to address one issue, and that is the issue of a disparity study that I believe you should include in next year's budget. As you know, the city took on that challenge this year. There is a disparity study underway, and as you probably are aware, that there is cooperative procurement language in that contract, which the school system could participate in. And so, I would strongly recommend that you include that in your budget. This is a relatively large school system when you look around the state, and maybe there isn't any issues with regard to how the school system spends with respect to women-owned and minority companies, but there's one way to find out, and that is with a disparity study. That is what the city is doing, and I just left the city earlier today, and one of the things that they're finding out is that because they went forward with the disparity study, already they're seeing results. So again, I would strongly recommend that you move forward with this. The pricing on something like this, the cost for something like this, again, would be help because you could participate in that contract that's already underway with the city. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, those are all the speakers that I had signed up in advance for the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have anyone from the audience who would like to participate in the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
No, ma'am.
Moving along for the approval of minutes. Before we approve the minutes this evening, a corrected version of the minutes was passed out to my colleagues, and it was just a simple correction. On page 11 was F2. Just a couple of words were changed at the bottom. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as corrected of our last meeting on November 21st. It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Holtz has seconded. The voting board is open. The minutes as corrected have been approved of the November 21st meeting. There are quite a few adjustments to our agenda this evening, as was discussed in our workshop. First of all, we will complete items C and D of our workshop after the formal meeting this evening. And Mrs. Manning has asked that the consent item B be moved to action, so it will become action item B. Also, in the consent agenda, we are deleting item 12D, which is the policy 4-43, and that policy will be sent back to the Policy Committee for further review. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt... 12D3 in consent was moved to action.
They removed 12D3.
Oh, removing 12D3. I'm sorry. So, okay. So also, in the consent agenda, we are deleting 12D3, which is policy 4-43, that will be sent back to the Policy Committee for further review. So the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, reflecting consent item B be moved to action item B, and also the deletion of consent item 12D3. The motion is made by Mrs. Melnick.
It was Mrs. Riggs.
Mrs. Riggs. Motion is made by Mrs. Riggs, seconded by Mr. Edwards. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. It includes textbook adoptions for parenting and child development, teen living, early childhood education, and the intro to childcare occupations. It also includes various Dominion Energy easements, Policy Review Committee recommendations for the Audit Charter and related policies, Policy 3-96, the Office of Internal Audit and the Audit Committee, Policy 3-46, audits, the Audit Committee, Internal Audit Charter. It includes Policy 2-48, salaries and compensation, Policy 4-77, bus drivers and driver assistance, Policy 4-76, teacher assistants, Policy 4-75, conditions of employment, Policy 4-90, substitute employees, Policy 4-92, summer school teachers and corresponding regulations, Policy 4-93, employment of temporary and part-time employees, Policy 4-94, exchange teachers, Policy 4-95, consensus agents, Policy 6-83, private educational courses. Is there a motion? Mr. McDonald has made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Holtz. The voting board is open. The consent agenda has been approved. Under action, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments. Motion is made by Mrs. Rye, seconded by Mrs. Riggs. Is there discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. And the personnel report and administrative appointments have been approved. Next on the agenda is the Special Education Advisory Committee Extension of Current Appointments. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to extend the current appointment of the following three Special Education Advisory Committee members through the end of the current school year: Sandra Herman, who is a former parent; Donna Robel, who is a parent; Cheryl Ward, former parent and agency representative. Motion is made by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Manning.
I move to strike the original motion and substitute it with the following motion that has just been passed out to you. The motion reads to reappoint the following three Special Education Advisory Committee members for a three-year term per the bylaws of the Special Education Advisory Committee: Sandra Herman, Donna Robel, Cheryl Ward. I would like to further state that SEAC bylaws state that volunteers will be appointed or reappointed for a three-year term. They have not requested to be extended. They have requested for a reappointment. These folks who are, these folks volunteer their time to try to make our special education program the best that it can be. I believe if we only appoint them for a period of six months, it would be disrespectful of them and the time that they give to serve our students and this board. They would have to go through all of this, this whole process again, to reapply in just six months.
Do you have a second for your amendment?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald has seconded. Is there discussion? Mrs. Rye.
Yes, I just want to share for the discussion, the reason the original proposal was for January, June 30th, and it was the present draft that's out there for review calls for assuming all these committees do eventually come under one umbrella, that we align all the appointments terms, that everybody's on the same schedule. So whether the term is two years, three years, your term will basically mirror the school year and would end on June 30th of your respective term. So that was the rationale for that. And these, and certainly, I think everybody sitting up here appreciates beyond words what these volunteers do, and these volunteers would certainly would have the option, and I hope they would, to, you know, to apply at the appropriate time for a further extension.
Mr. Edwards.
To amplify what Mrs. Rye indicated, the Policy Committee is trying to create consistency amongst our advisory committees. There are some important variables that are applied for membership in some committees that are not provided for in the other committees in terms of geographic diversity and specialization and things like that, which we're hoping to include as a standard for all of our advisory committees. And I believe, Mrs. Linetti, you can correct me, but even if we did appoint them for a three-year term, if we got to June and needed to recall some of the appointments, I guess the board would retain the authority to do that. Is that correct?
It's going to depend on what the policy regulations are. It may require that bylaws be changed at some of these committees, so all that's going to happen to place.
The intent was, over the next six months, to work with the advisory committees to update their bylaws, as Mrs. Linetti had indicated, that whatever the final form of the adjustment to our policy was, that she would work with the advisory committees to make their bylaws align with whatever new policy we came up with. That's why the suggestion for six months, so that we could move forward hopefully in a better, more appropriate way.
Any other discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. Just expanding upon that conversation. Mrs. Linetti, until our policy, forgive me, until our policy process is complete and what we're looking at, do we have any legal issue with conflict with bylaws of SEAC or any other committee, or does our action supersede those bylaws at this moment?
If you were to take your amended motion, your amended motion won't make a difference. If you appoint them, they would point as if we had not looked at the policy yet, and then you, as a board, if you were to come back with policy and regulations, look at 721 at the last meeting, as a result that we make changes, then there may be, depending which committees are affected, everybody may have to redo their bylaws and maybe new rules. So one way or the other, some committees are probably going to change between June and so they may have to affect... so they may have to affect it. It just depends on which ones and what you do. So theoretically, everybody may have to look at their bylaws and make something different. I don’t think it makes any difference. You could appoint for a three-year term now, and if the Board changes its policy on this, then you may have to then have the committees change their bylaws, and everybody may have to change their terms, and you’ll have to appoint. It just depends on what the final decision is.
But if we were to pass the original motion tonight, is there any real conflict?
There’s not a conflict, it’s just going to be messy, because you’re going to have to, various terms are going to have to probably change. I don’t know that SEAC will be one of them, but if there were three years now, you might have to say in June, SEAC is now appointing everybody from July 1st for a two-year period. Whatever term you had appointed in December will now have to change to July 1st. That’s how it works.
Ms. McLeod.
I would like to support Mrs. Manning’s substitute motion. These people have been approached about serving for three years. We don’t know if we’re going to have to change anything, so it just makes sense to me to go ahead and approve them, and then we see what comes out of the Policy Committee and make the changes accordingly then. But at least we have these people committed, and it could be by the time we make our decision and they finally get their bylaws changed, this could be an entire year, and you’ve disrupted process and happening, and how much do they want to get involved if they may even turn it down. So I just recommend we go ahead and we see how everything turns out. It could be that they’re perfectly fine with a three-year commitment, and we adjust accordingly once the policy has been reviewed, but allow them to keep moving forward.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, I agree with my two colleagues, Ms. Manning and Ms. McLeod. Unfortunately, this Board decided to disrupt the appointment on two of our fine committees, the Gifted Advisory Committee and the Special Education Committee, right in the middle of the process. I think that was politically motivated, and so therefore, I don’t want to go along the subjective route and let’s wait and wait and wait and see. These folks, we know them well, if you follow and are interested in special education, you know these three ladies have worked throughout, I want to say, 16 years that I’ve been on there, and they think that they’re coming up for three years, and they were actually shocked to see that they were being not reappointed. So we need to vote on this and then see what happens with the policy. And again, I hope the Policy Committee sets some good policy and does not be subjective on this.
There certainly is a discussion. So seeing no other discussion, we are now voting on the amendment, on the substitute motion, which is to reappoint the following three Special Education Advisory Committee members for a three-year term per the bylaws of the Special Education Advisory Committee: Sandra Herman, Donna Robel, and Cheryl Ward. So at this time, the voting board is open. Okay, the motion fails. We are back to the original motion, which is to appoint the Special Education Advisory Committee members through the end of the current school year. Any discussion? Ms. McLeod.
I want to just reiterate that I’m voting yes, because I’m not going to vote against these people. I’m flustered with the process, but I’m voting because I trust these people, and I hope that after the six months of serving, they will continue to want to serve, or that they’ll even be willing to serve for six months, not knowing what comes after. But I want to make it clear, I’m voting for these people, not the process.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
I’d also like to thank Ms. Herman, and Ms. Robel, and Ms. Ward, and I will be doing the same as Ms. McLeod.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Voting board is open. Oops, the voting board is open now. And those three wonderful volunteers have been approved for six months until the end of the school year. Next on our agenda is information about the textbook adoption for Advancement Placement and Human Geography.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board, Chair Anderson, Vice Chair Edwards, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I’m here this evening to provide you with information regarding the textbook adoption committee’s selection for Advanced Placement Human Geography, offered at each of our comprehensive high schools. The textbook recommended for consideration is scheduled for implementation in the fall of 2018. College Board requires the adoption of college-level text for AP courses. The current text has been in place for six years and was adopted in 2012. Before presenting our recommendation, I’d like to thank the Secondary Social Studies Coordinator, Chris Trock, who’s here with me this evening, our committee members, student representatives, and community experts for dedicating their time and efforts to choose the best textbooks for our students. We have proposed a seven-year adoption plan for the AP Human Geography course. On the screen, you see the recommended first-choice textbook selection. The committee has selected “A Cultural Landscape and Introduction to Human Geography” as its first choice for the course of AP Human Geography. This text aligns with the College Board Curriculum Framework for Advanced Placement Human Geography. This text and accompanying resources provide a balanced understanding of human geography. In addition to this textbook, Human Geography, preparing for the Advanced Placement Examination, was also recommended. The committee felt strongly that the two resources together will provide students with the most comprehensive study of the content that will be assessed on the AP exam. This chart shows the implementation costs for the first-choice recommendation for the proposed adoption. The initial implementation cost for both resources is just over $324,000. The total implementation cost over the seven-year adoption cycle is approximately $421,000. Thank you for consideration of the committee’s recommendations. I have with me this evening Ms. Chris Trock, Secondary Social Studies Coordinator, and we are prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? Ms. Manning.
Can you remind me how long the current textbook has been in use?
The current textbook was in use for six years.
Is that typical of our AP classes?
It was typical to do six-year contracts in the past. We’ve extended to seven. For AP classes, it’s typical to have a shorter adoption cycle because of the material changes and any College Board standard changes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Edwards.
I think you’re telling me that the College Board is basically driving this adoption process and cycle, and so if we’re going to offer AP courses, we’re going to have to spend $166 per student to do that.
In part. It’s the standards change that also drive it, when the curriculum changes of College Board that drives the change or the need for the textbook.
The parents that are out there listening, that’s another benefit. Your college students will be hitting you up for books if you don’t take AP courses.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Paul.
Thank you very much.
Our final information topic is information about the disposition of school board-owned property. Mr. Arnold.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Edwards, members of the Board, Dr. Spence. I’ve got Deb Brian, Assistant City Attorney, with me. You have on your agenda the disposition of property, the roughly 10.7-acre site adjacent to Renaissance Academy on Witch Duck Road. You have a purchase agreement and a full price offer of $4.5 million from the Franklin Johnson Group. You see here the disposition schedule. You have it on your agenda tonight for information. We have a public hearing scheduled regarding the disposition of surplus property in two weeks, on the 19th. You will have on your agenda this matter for action to execute the purchase agreement along with adopting a resolution declaring the property a surplus. And then moving forward, the property is currently Zoned B2, and the developer has a rezoning application into the Planning Department and is currently scheduled to appear before the Planning Commission to have the 10.7 acres rezoned from B2 to apartments. Assuming that goes well, Council will take up the rezoning application likely on February the 20th, along with the authorization to convey the property for the School Division to retain the funds. Similar process to what we used earlier this summer related to the, excuse me, last summer related to the Adult Learning Center property that we conveyed to the city. And the next slide will show the audience the property. For those of you who are from around here, it’s what I call the old GEX property. We had our Virginia Beach Central Academy program in there, and when we moved the CEO folks and the Central Academy kids into the new Renaissance property, the contractor, WM Jordan, came back and tore the property down. We currently have two short-term month-to-month leases on the property. With Checkered Flag and Urology of Virginia, they currently park cars on the property. So those are month-to-month leases. If you’d happen to answer any questions that Board members may have.
Any questions from the Board?
I have one. Where will the public hearing be held on the 19th?
Right here.
Here?
Yes, ma’am.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any standing committee reports this evening? Ms. Rye.
Mrs. Felton may want to weigh in too, but Equity Council, I was there as the alternate along with Mrs. Felton, and some of the key points, it was a really productive meeting, but announcements for the next Beach Girls Rock, which is January 27th at FC, and the next African Male Summit is January 20th. I didn’t catch that location. There was some feedback from JMU, an institute on best teaching practices, and they had students come back and report on that. There was notification of some Asian Indian scholarships that our kids were recipients of, and we had Ms. Thomas, Coordinator of Social Workers, who spoke on attendance support, which was interesting. And then the official guest speaker was, the group is known, the group represents, it’s an alumni group for both the original Princess Anne County Training School, which later expanded into Union Kempsville High School. And so these alumni have established an alumni group. They’re looking to raise money to offer scholarships for our students. They want to start organizing tours of the museum at Renaissance Academy, and so all good stuff. And they’re also sponsoring an oratory, Word and Oratory Contest, April 21st, 2018, and information is being channeled through the School Division for that. Anything more, Mrs. Felton?
Only that the Avoc American Male Summit will be held at Lass Town High School.
When is that?
Let me just correct that. It’s going to be at Kellam. Kellam. It’s going to be at Kellam.
Do you know when it’ll be?
Yeah.
Ms. McLeod.
I guess it’s important to just mention that the Building Utilization Committee met, and we received a report from Melissa, and it was a great report, and then right now things seem to be going well, so nothing that should require any rezoning, so we can dodge the bullet. The Chesapeake just got to go through, but it was a good report, and we seem to be at a good capacity of our buildings.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards.
The Audit Committee has not met since our last meeting, when I did report out, but we are meeting this Thursday, and we’ll be receiving the report from the external auditors, as that report will then be forwarded to the full Board after that presentation.
Thank you. Any other reports? Okay. That concludes our formal meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on non-agenda items this evening?
No ma’am, we do not.
Okay, then we will now recess and continue our workshop in the Einstein Lab in about 10 minutes.